Order? Let's all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we, I need a, on the agenda, I need a motion for approval of our minutes.
Make that motion.
Thank you, Ms. Matthews.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Davidson, Mr. Frazier.
Mr. Davidson.
Yes.
Mr. Isgro.
Yes.
Mrs. Matthews.
Yes.
Mr. Sprague.
Yes.
Mrs. Baker. Yes. I believe I see Vice Mayor Ryan here, so Vice Mayor, if you'd come up and tell us what's going on with the city.
Good evening, and Matt, congratulations on the appointment, Mrs. President, it's fantastic. Looking forward to working with you and the rest of the board again this year.
Thank you.
Just two things briefly, as you've heard, I was in a meeting last week with the Assistant Vice President of Amtrak at Union Terminal, this meeting was attended by Mayor Cincinnati, Congressman Landsman, numerous stakeholders, including the Reds and the OKI and other transportation officials about getting Amtrak going in the state. The most significant part of the meeting was that they are highlighting the 3C line that we've been lobbying hard, so the 3C line is Cincinnati, Dayton, Columbus, and Cleveland, and that is the line we've been really pushing hard to get, and when they uploaded the map at the meeting, Hamilton was on that proposed map. Last year, we were not, so the reason why that's significant is because our lobbying effort is finally paying off, and it starts right here with the city's schools, because last year, we did a very aggressive letter-writing campaign with our students, and we sent hundreds of letters to the governor, our students, who believe in this project, and I firmly believe and I know that without their support, without our students stepping up, getting involved in this process, believing in their hometown, is the reason why we are on this map. So, to the schools, thank you, Mike, thank you for your support on that, and the board, thank you for allowing us to get our students involved in what is a very significant improvement to getting the Amtrak stop here, so. The next steps with that, Governor DeWine has authorized the grant process to begin, so we'll find out this summer if the grant money has been approved to fund the feasibility study. Once the feasibility is, study is completed, that will be, I think, about a year and a half, and that's when we'll find out if this is going to work or not, so another year or so to go, but, you know, we started this process a year and a half ago, and every step that we've achieved brings us one step closer to our goal to get Amtrak in the city. So tomorrow, and I'm sure you guys know this, Hamilton Police will be doing their school zone blitz, we are looking forward to that. We've received a few complaints, in fact, yesterday, we had a gentleman show up to counsel who was deeply concerned about the intersection, well, it's a bus stop at Glen Cross and Sunset. We are, we're gonna get that taken care of, we understand it's, that's not the only stop around town that's having some problems with, with folks disregarding the stopped school buses, so obviously, that's a dangerous situation, we don't want that to happen, and those who are doing it, we're going to come after them, and we're gonna put an end to this, because it's rampant, and it's a very dangerous situation for everybody involved, so. So that blitz is gonna begin tomorrow, should be getting results throughout the day of this blitz, so I'm looking forward to, to really getting this addressed, so, that being said, that's all I have, and.
Vice Mayor, congratulations on all the work you've done on the railroad, and, and again, thank you for the continued relationship that we have with the city, and we appreciate it very much.
Really.
Glad that we could help.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely, looking forward to it.
Thanks, guys.
With that, I believe we have some updates, so, Mr. Holbrook.
Thank you, President Baker, tonight, we have two presentations for you, the first is from Garfield Middle School, and who I'd like to introduce tonight is Matt Shermer, the principal at Garfield Middle School, to give the board an update on the good things that are happening at Garfield. Mr. Shermer?
There might have been word out there that we were second, so give me one second to set up, I apologize. Keeping us on our toes. Ready, respectful, responsible, yes, I am a Griffin, my name is Matt Shermer, Principal of Garfield Middle School. I am very, very pleased to be in front of you this evening, I want to thank, obviously, our board, President Baker, Vice President Matthews, members Davidson, Sprague, and Isgro, thank you very much for having us and what you do for our community. I want to thank Mr. Holbrook, Mrs. Blevins, Mr. Wright, and Mr. Frazier, all for having us here tonight and presenting in front of you. We're very excited, we've ran through this thing quite a few times, I think we're ready to go, but, you know, the interesting part about this is that, you know, I get to work with an incredible team, so I definitely want to introduce our team that's with us tonight, and that is Ms. Shelley Beimer, Ms. Laura Hord, and then we've got Ms. Riddle, and Ms. Rose. So we are a very dynamic team, we bring a lot to the table, we all have our individual strengths, but we have a very, very strong team at Garfield. So where do we begin? I think the biggest challenge where we start off is, is that, this is the first time I've got to do this presentation in four years of serving as your building principal at Garfield Middle School, and it is a very unique honor, but it's also, you know, the past of what it is, and we've spent four years between, last year was canceled, we had something come up last minute, and then two years of COVID, so we've got a lot to cover, and I want to apologize to Mr. Holbrook up front, I know we had a 15-slide minimum, but I've got a lot to talk about, so I want to, I'm gonna jam in as much as I can here, I will go fast, but I think it's important, I kind of show you some of the things that we've been able to do, and I think it's very important we start off with, some of the mergers that have happened over the last four years, we've merged our football teams and basketball teams, and then luckily enough, our first year of our merger of our seventh-grade teams, our seventh-grade boys were able to bring home a 20-0 record and the GMC title, so huge, huge shout-out to our boys. Again, we've also merged our football teams, our football teams have had tremendous success, and it's really has helped grow our program, we had, looking at football, you know, we had teams stacked up, ready to go, 70, 80 kids at the beginning of summer for both teams, and it's, that's an incredible thing, we've always talked about getting our kids involved, involve kids, make great students, we know that's where we find our success. Just to kind of roll through some of the things that we do throughout the year, open house is one of our biggest nights of the year, I think that goes true for every school in the district, we do a tremendous amount of getting resources, usually we have 20 to 30 resource vendors at every open house, providing everything from adoption, excuse me, kinship services, access to primary health solutions, which is right-connected to our building, it's a tremendous asset for us to get vaccinations, mental health care, dentistry, eyewear, and then we also, one of the big things we also do through a partnership with Sebastian Grooming, we set up and have free haircuts for students that want to get that first-day cut and look great for the first day of school, we do about 25 to 30 cuts a year, so in the last four years, we've had about 120 haircuts, ready and fresh to go for school. Facilities and resources, through some COVID funding and some other grant funding that we receive, we were able to add two outdoor classrooms, I know a lot of schools in the district are supporting those, especially now when we're all kind of getting antsy and getting out of the winter gloom. Additionally, you know, we've obviously been blessed by the ACES program that's allowed all of our eighth-grade students to have brand-new laptops that become theirs upon graduation, our students absolutely take care of them and treat them as their own, we've had a full office remodel, which has allowed us to really enhance the safety first and foremost, we probably have one of the safest lobbies in the district now with the current setup that we have, and plus, it's just fresh, it's new, and it's very warm and very inviting. And then lastly, I want to give a shout-out to Ms. Brockman, she actually won a Laura Bush Foundation Award this past year for $5,000 in library materials, and she spent all of her money on beginning learners and on Spanish books for our growing EL population, which we are the district hub for. Community partners, this is just the tip of the iceberg, Hype, we have consistently worked with Pastor Shaq and Hype over the last four years, in whichever form that looks like, from our after-school program, we had some DJing at one point, and to our Hype Night, which we have on this Friday, our students love our Hype Nights, and Pastor Shaq does a great job of bringing that into us. I know I've got a lot of food items on here, so don't judge, but that is all intentional, because a lot of these companies support our students, not just with, hey, they get a meal here and there, but after-school programs also supporting us through our football teams, a lot of those meals come through us, popcorn comes from Jolly's for our incentive programs, they do a lot of great things, 17 Strong, we've worked with them to do some cleanup projects around the neighborhood with the North End, and the Healthy Hamilton Coalition Envisions, you're gonna hear about that from Ms. Hord, but tremendous community partnerships that we've started. In terms of citizenship programming, fine arts, our fine arts are exploding, we are doing a tremendous job of getting kids involved, we have about 120 band members in our seventh-grade class this year, which is tremendous, it's about one in four students are in the band. Additionally, we've been able to bring back our Washington DC trip, we've done that twice now, and we've also brought back programs like our Constitution Day and Veterans Day, when I want to give a shout-out to Mr. Wilson, who has a hand in a lot of those citizenship pieces. End-of-the-year events, we've changed up a couple of things, added a couple of things, this year, we've, the last two years, we've done one building, one book, this is after that four-week battery of testing, our students are kind of at that point, and our teachers, let's be honest, of just, they're, they're ready to, how do we seal up the year? And we wanted to bring something that was cohesive for the building to come together, last year, we read Hidden Figures, and really dove into that, and then, we, this year, we were looking at We Beat the Streets, and both those books have accompanying movies and documentaries, so what we do is, we have our community go ahead, and we reach out, you'll see the center picture, Mayor Ryan actually came in, read a chapter, and we read the building as a, as a whole at the end of every day, and by the end of that four-week period, we've read a book together, and then, on the final night, actually, on our, if you look at the picture on the right, we do, on our eighth-grade recognition night, we actually have a one-book-one-building film show, and we go into our auditorium, and community members, kids come in, we have treats, snacks, popcorn, and they actually watch the documentary that they read the book over, so, pretty cool program, and then, obviously, our eighth-grade recognition, we changed up to an open house, that came from COVID, but we really liked it, so we kept it, each student gets a sign, that sign is, got Garfield and the Hamilton freshman logos on it, teachers put anything they want on it, they sign them, they, special messages to the students, it's an open-house format, and our students have absolutely loved it, and that includes our parents as well. So, that's a lot, and I apologize, so, I think I trimmed it down a little bit, but this year, let's talk about this year, we had two major goals this year, and two of the major goals, very simplified, are, we wanted 80% of our students to hit their growth score on their MAP test. MAP test is given three times a year, I know you guys have heard about it with other presentations, but our MAP testing is all about showing where our students are, and it's a very closely correlated test to our Ohio State testing, so it gives us a good indicator of where we'll be in the spring, and in June, when we receive those scores, so we want 80% of our students to meet that one year of expected growth, that's our goal there, and then our second was, GMS will implement a positive behavior intervention system, I know you guys have heard a lot about PBIS, and we've done a lot with our Tier One and Tier Two and Tier Three, we're gonna focus a little bit on Tier One and a little Tier Three tonight, but I'm gonna stop talking, and I'm gonna turn it over to the experts here, the rest of my team, so at this time, I'm gonna turn it over to Mrs. Beimer, and she's gonna talk about PBIS planning and systems.
If you take all my papers, he was gonna steal what we're saying, so, I get to talk about PBIS planning and systems, and after their long end of the year that he just discussed, many of our teachers spent valuable summertime exploring behavior trends to develop a plan that would work best for all of our students, so you'll see the teachers are looking at the data, the data they examined was the catalyst for change as they worked together to create common expectations for all common areas to support our building as we implemented PBIS, so we just wanted to give the students a common sign in every area that they're at of what the behavioral expectations are, instead of "don't do this," it is "what we need you to do," so that we had less of the behaviors, and it was a more positive environment for them. At the same time, teachers at the retreat were introduced to an Embrace CHAMPs, which provides students with a familiarity of common expectations and language in all classrooms at Garfield Middle School. If you look, it talks about conversation levels, activities, movement, and really what's expected of students, and usually the success, there's a math example that talks about the grade-level learning standard they expect them to get, but what kind of behavior you expect out of students, what voice level, so they're not guessing and getting in trouble, and what we have found through classroom walkthroughs by district administrators, building administrators, academic coaches, and the department heads, which are teachers that other teachers work with, we have seen data that shows teachers are implementing CHAMPs across the board, and it's given students a better understanding of our behavior expectations in all classrooms, we're all speaking the same language, and it helps them out a lot, and I would like to take, turn it over to Mrs. Rose, our excellent eighth-grade assistant principal, who gets to talk about the fun part, incentives and awards.
I did not pay her to say that, maybe I did, it's great to see all of you, hope your evening's going well. So, at Garfield, our BLT and our PBIS leadership teams, we have developed a robust Tier One structures, and it supports all students. This evening, I get to highlight the various ways we celebrate kids, and it is definitely all about the kids, right, it's why we're here, and also, how we incentivize being a Griffin that is ready, responsible, and respectful. So at GMS, we truly value recognizing and celebrating the efforts and accomplishments of our students, and we have a few pictures here to, again, highlight that, so first is our Griffin of the Month, big deal at Garfield. Each team nominates two students that exemplify what it means to be a great Griffin, and those students will receive a delicious La Rosa's Pizza, they receive a certificate and a letter from Mr. Shermer. Next is our Honorable Recognition, and this is for academic excellence, they're getting the job accomplished in the classroom. Students will receive either a Bronze, Silver, or Gold certificate, and they get two treats throughout the quarter, and a homeroom visit by a member of this team, and they have their name hanging in the walls of Garfield. Grow cards, big old grow cards, these are gold, and we have some for you today, so you can be a part of our, our community. So again, as part of our PBIS program, teachers shower students that are demonstrating ready, responsible, and respectful behavior, these cards, as I stated, are extremely valuable, these grow cards can earn them the opportunity to go first at lunch, big deal, they are eligible for all the different drawings, those occur weekly, quarterly, semestral, and at the end of the year, we give away things such as big-screen TVs, it is huge to incentivize that. So, grow cards are not only building, they're also about our classrooms, our teachers and our teams, they take these cards with that token economy system, and kids can earn things like, we have fidgets, they're dragon fidgets, that are made with Project Lead the Way, they get phone calls home, homework passes, and the list just goes on and on and on. This slide is going to showcase our quarterly incentives, and I'm telling you, we have fun at Garfield. Middle school, we have to have fun, and we do, lots of fun. So each quarter, students that meet a specific academic and behavior criteria are able to attend an incentive, where students get to strut their team colors and compete in various activities to earn points. As you know, Garfield, we embrace teaming, and so, we have seven mini-schools within our building. This year, to promote team spirit and camaraderie, the PBIS leadership team added a competitive edge known as the Griffin Cup, AKA, where's the belt? Come on. No, this is a big deal, this is a big deal, so. So teams earn points, they earn points throughout the year, and this has to do with MAP growth, grades, attendance, behavior, community involvement, Spirit Weeks, incentive competitions, points are updated every three weeks and after the incentive days. This has truly been a game-changer for our building in motivating our students to strive to be the very best that they can be, because their team is counting on every single person to be the very best version of theirself, and this is hot off the press, I'm so excited, I'm so excited. GMS, we are gonna hold our fourth quarter at Spooky Nook, and that, our team, our teachers, our students, they are so super excited, and I think that's gonna bring an extra little edge to get them to meet the expectations that we are holding for them. This is my last slide, I promise. Ms. Fay, finally, I want to take a moment to recognize the red and gold of Garfield, and we definitely are bleeding blue, but I've never met such a selfless individual, she is an amazing woman, she is small in stature, she really, really is, but I will tell you, I'm getting a little teary-eyed, because she's, she's so special to my heart, but she is very mighty in her heart, in her dedication, and her love for all things Garfield. So Ms. Fay, she did retire last year, oh, but she's still around, she continues to run the snack shack for all of our sporting events, she is the queen of deals, if you need a deal, Ms. Fay will hook you up, and she is a champion for finding those donations, she is really behind a lot of the stuff, I'll call it, or the items that we give out for all of our, you know, our incentives, so Ms. Fay, if you are listening, I don't know if she is or not, but we do adore her, and I can tell, but many people know Ms. Fay. So, at this time, I am going to quickly turn it over to Ms. Riddle, she is our, our amazing seventh-grade counselor.
Thank you, Ms. Rose, we also have a variety of Tier One activities to address the social-emotional needs, academic behavior needs of our students at Garfield, so this is just some of the highlights that we want to point out, because there are more than we could, could ever talk about. The first one is Change Point, this is a new program for us, it is, the Change Point Company brought to Garfield in December a program called the ID Project, this was offered to all of our seventh-grade students with a focus on social-emotional skills such as self-confidence, empathy, responsibility. So the ID Project included two Change Point presenters who spent the day in our gymnasium with the students, and through a series of storytelling, small-group sharing sessions, and large-group participatory activities, games, getting the kids up and moving, students, teachers, and many adult community volunteers developed a sense of just how similar we are as human beings, as opposed to how different we are. At the end of the day, students were asked to consider how to take action to help them move forward with positive behaviors that both give and get respect, it was a really moving day for, for many students and adults that participated. However, another activity, addressing a wide variety of student needs and interests, included career exploration, was Discovery Day, so, Discovery Day was, at first, a solution to a problem of capacity with our Change Point program, only being able to serve half of the seventh-grade population at a time, so in response, we created Discovery Day. This event invited a variety of community members to our school to present 20-minute activities on a wide variety of topics. Some of our most popular presenters included the Hamilton City Fire Department, the Fitness Center, Animal Friends Humane Society, Miami University, First Financial Bank, and many, many high-school students from Hamilton High School's Butler Tech Programs. We were absolutely amazed by how willing the community was to come out and support our students for not just one day, but two days of volunteering their time to share their skills and gifts with our students, and the students really enjoyed it. And then finally, another Tier One program offered to not all seventh graders, but also eighth graders, at Garfield is the Advisory Time, which also includes the Second Step Program, so Second Step is a new program that is computer presentation style, but led by the students' academic teachers every Friday for 35-minute short lessons on a variety of social-emotional skill-building activities, so building goals, how to deal with conflict, managing your, your thoughts and emotions. Time is set aside also on Fridays to have students just take that break, to look at their grades, and to see what work is missing, and what else they can do to, to improve for the next week. So these have been some great additions to our Tier One supports for students, but we also have some great Tier Two and Tier Three activities for more specific students that we find need additional help. So our eighth-grade counselor, Laura Hord, will share those with you now.
Thank you. Yes, because, right, we all know that some of our students need a little bit more than just the building-wide programs, so what we've done is, we have determined which of our students are most at risk of falling behind, we identified what supports are already in place for them, and then took this information back to our teacher teams, and are working to ensure that all receive an intervention or another support, including referring them to one of the many services community partners bring to our building. I have a lab voice, I'm sorry, I wasn't by the microphone, okay. We are truly appreciative of these community partners who are providing educational at-risk, prevention, social development, and mental health supports for our students. Of our current student body, 72 students have participated in a small group, such as Companions on a Journey, that does, focuses on grief support, or Fierce Girls or Men of Honors, led by the YWCA facilitators, or one of our Envisions groups focusing on self-regulation or relationship skills, and of course, we've sent countless students to primary health solutions, right adjacent on our campus, for glasses, any kind of medical conditions, and even some behavioral and emotional support as well. Over 45 students have received therapy in our building, and 13 of our students are currently receiving case management at Garfield. Particularly, just want to highlight, oop, sorry, that didn't happen. As some of you might know, mental health specialists are hard to come by right now, so we are particularly proud of the team that we have at Garfield. With the help of Mindpiece, we were the first building in the district to secure Children's Hospital as our school-based mental health partner.
Yes.
David Brandt, our therapist, joined us last spring and quickly became an integral member of the Garfield community. He greets students in the morning as they enter the building, and he is often in the ca- and he is often in the cafeteria, hanging out during our lunch periods. All the students know who he is, and they really think, they think that he is really cool. Watch that up. Also able, we were able to keep our school-based case management person, Cheryl Ripley, from New Path from last year. And she also goes to the freshman building, which is going to provide a lot of continuity for the students on her caseload. But these are some of our Tier Two and Three supports, especially focusing on the social-emotional development and behaviors of our students, because we know that these are the areas that can really be a barrier for academic achievement. And next, I'm going to pass it off to Mr. Shermer again to talk a little bit more about that academic achievement piece.
Thank you. Mike, I am watching the clock. I got you. We are, we're getting there. We're going to get it done. Here we go. So you can see as the, all the amazing things that we are doing, and there's a ton of it that is just really the social-emotional support, that just the building of character, and I think that is the essence of middle school. And we have spent a ton of time, resources, and efforts to really coordinate a lot of great things for our students. But on the other side, we also want to see where does this also pan out on the academic side? So when we look at that 80% growth, I'm going to go through this a little bit quickly, but we have put in a ton of time and effort in putting in a lot of programs this year. We are piloting a new program in math, in ELA. We are also going through and initiating and pushing through our Kagan strategies, which are getting our students talking more, engaged in class. We've done a pilot with Newzella and EduProtocols. We've done that through our social studies program where we are pushing literacy every single day, getting our kids to read, write, and speak more and more every single day. And on top of that with Champs, and then some of our Tier Two stuff with SRA and Read 180, and those are two programs that really focus on our struggling readers. So we also have one beautiful benefit, and that is our, our two coaches that we have, and they are fantastic. They don't just serve ELA and math as their content standards are. You know, I've walked in on Ms. Johnson working with the science teacher the other day. Ms. Brooks works with all of our teachers across the building, and they do a tremendous job of not just focusing on content, but focusing on improving our staff. And I know we couldn't have gotten as far as we've gotten without those two. Lastly, I'm going to talk a little bit of data. So where is the proof of the pudding? And that's, that's what we're looking at here is our winter MAP data. This is called the quadrants. This is probably one of my favorite ways to look at our MAP data, and I think most of our educators in here can agree. It's very clear and very poignant. You look at the middle line of that 50 percentile, and across that middle, if your average scores are hitting above that in either of those two top quadrants, you are hitting, at least you're on track for your students to hit their yearly growth. And if you look at our, our averages for the math, six plus and reading six plus, all four of our areas hit above that 50 percentile line at our midpoint check, which I can tell you, looking at our scores from last year, I remember walking around actually in this room and looking at our scores and being, we got to get this up. We got to do this right. Not only this, but we also see this with, if you break this down to all of our subgroups, we had one subgroup between our EL gifted and special ed students that fell below that 50 percentile line. All of our other subgroups. And like I said, we are the hub for EL students in the district. We have a larger special ed population. We are hitting our marks, and that really comes down to not only all of these programs we're doing, but I can tell you right now, we have the best staff in the district. I'm not afraid to say that. We have truly a team atmosphere at Garfield. And what, what I love about Garfield on top of our kids is the fact that our students are just in the greatest place they can be, because our staff wants to be at Garfield. Garfield, you know, sometimes can get this rapid. We talk about, yeah, I'm a Griffin, and that, yeah, I'm a Griffin mentality is that I'm proud to be a Garfield Griffin. I'm proud to be here and proud of what I'm doing here at Garfield. And our staff embodies that every day. This is the best team atmosphere I've seen in the staff. I've had the privilege over four years to hire about 65% of these people. I've got a lot of great Wiley veterans in there too, that service us just as well, and they help mentor our new teachers. So that is where we're at with everything. I think we're doing a tremendous job. I'm very excited to see our spring testing. I know we went a little bit over today, but I think we earned a couple of extra minutes for four years of absence here. So lastly, I do have a small gift for all of the staff members here up in front and our board members. We do have a cup for you. We also got a couple of other treats in there. We also have a grow card, so if you want to go eat first in lunch, just bring this with you, put it in the bucket, and we'll take care of you. I see you, Mr. Frazier.
I just, I say this every time, I'm just totally amazed at what the staff and teachers are doing throughout the entire district. But, you know, middle school is a little bit different. There, it's, it's a pretty tough, I think, for those kids, because they're going through so much. And, and kids that don't have as much support maybe as they, they should have at home, but you guys are fulfilling a lot of that there. And I just can't thank you enough for what you do for our students, and just know that, that that's what this school board is all about, is our kids. And, and thank you for all you do.
Thank you, Ms. Baker.
Same. We definitely appreciate you guys, and just, I think, you know, when I thought about your presentation, it was like, it sounded like just one big hug. You know? It sounded like just one big hug that the kids need, you know, from the services, from just the team effort, just from the excitement that they have, and just the camaraderie, it seems like, that you guys genuinely have between your staff. I think that's super huge, and it, that just goes into the schools. I am a red and gold Griffin, so, you know. Definitely, definitely, Ms. Fay, that's, I, I love her two pieces. She is the best. Don't nobody keep that snack case like she do. So, you know, so when we're there on height, it's like, oh, 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 put that back. That's Ms. Fay's. We not going to have them problems. So...
A lot of truth in that.
So, but you guys do an amazing job, so I applaud you guys, and definitely, the extra minutes was definitely well worth it. So definitely appreciate you guys so much.
Mr. Shermer, I'd like to say that I like the attitude that you and your staff have taken, that this is the best they can be. You know, this is all we get. This is the best they can be. That you have taken that for the attitude of, this is the best they can be, because you know, if you push them, they'll get better. And I appreciate the fact that you and your staff have taken that. Hold and keep pushing these students. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say thanks again for, for being here tonight, and the idea that all your teachers are working together, especially during the summer, to, to come up, what, what can we do to help our kids in coming together and all the awards and stuff? And yes, I'm very familiar with middle school kids, and they're a different breed, but the, the foundation that you're providing is wonderful. And I love the Discovery Day and bringing outside groups in, whether it's mental health groups, or the fire department, or the kids from Butler Tech. Creating community within our community is what it's all about. I want to thank you for that. And it's nice to know Ms. Fay is still around. I've known her for many, many, many years. Well, shut up, Mike. But anyway, but, but it's, it's nice that she feels devoted to that school too, because she feels that, that she's making a difference in those kids' lives. So congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Shermer, first of all, I want to thank you and your team for the leadership that you provide on a daily basis at Garfield. My heart's a middle school teacher. I was a high school principal for a long time, but I started off as a middle school teacher for five years, and then came back and was middle school principal. And I mean, if you can do middle school, you can pretty much go to the moon. I mean, it is, it is a challenging job, and, you know, the needs of students are different. And, you know, the teaming piece that we've been able to put in place over eight years and build that community so that you're supporting the kids beyond just in the classroom academically, I think is critical. And, and you've taken that and ran with it, and I thank you, I thank your team for everything that you've done for our students.
Thank you.
The second update we have this evening is from our preschool principal, Sarah Burdette. And the one of the challenging pieces with preschool that we have, as Sarah comes to the podium, is the fact that it isn't located in one singular facility. It's located in six of our eight elementaries throughout the district. And that poses a little bit of a challenge for Sarah as she jumps around from elementary to elementary to, to work with the staff with that. So, you, you know, it's much needed, but it's also a significant challenge just, just from a facility standpoint. And so I'm going to turn this over to you, Ms. Burdette.
Okay, well, I didn't bring anything to bribe you with, so I switched my first slide to these cuties. What could be better than this, other than Starburst? So I'll, I'll have to skip around my slides, but I'm Sarah Burdette. I'm the principal of preschool programs for Hamilton School. I've been in Hamilton for my entire 24-year career in early childhood, kindergarten, special ed, preschool. This is where I live, breathe, and this is what I'm passionate about. I've been in this role. It's had different names, but I've been in this role for about four or five years, so... So to start off with, I just wanted to give an overview of what preschool is in Ohio and what it is in Hamilton. And preschool has many different governing bodies, people who tell us what to do. So the main one for us is the Ohio Department of Education. And ODE is in charge of all of our special ed compliance and rules. They also are responsible for the Ohio licensing of preschool. We are licensed by the Ohio Department of Education. They also help with our Early Childhood Education Grant, which is one funding source that we get for our students. The Early Childhood Education Grant is actually, several years ago, we were allotted 35 spots across our district, and we get money for each spot. And over COVID, those slots across the state have changed, and I was able to secure 74 now. So that's doubled, more than doubled, the amount of funding that we're bringing into the district. One of the other institutions is Step Up to Quality, and this is our rating system, and we'll talk a little bit more about this. But Step Up to Quality has its own rules and regulations and compliance pieces. And it's controlled partly by the Ohio Department of Ed, but also by the Ohio Department of Job and Family Services. ODJFS hasn't really played a big role in public preschool, like we run here in Hamilton, but as their relationship and partnership with the Ohio Department of Education has continued to expand, we're getting a lot more crossover between the two agencies. And so we do, some of our things do fall under the Ohio Department of Job and Family Services, specifically Step Up to Quality and the Early Childhood Education Grant. So it can be kind of a puzzle figuring out who requires what and why they require it, and what meets what compliance piece. So that's a fun part of my, my job. And my teacher on special assignment, Abby Schluter, wasn't able to be here tonight, but she helps tremendously with the compliance piece, so just shout out to her. Oh, there they are again. My preschool staff, so there's over 50 faces here across the district. This doesn't include the related services, the bus drivers, custodians, the nurses, the administrators, who all have a role in touching the lives of our preschool students. But these 50 really make the department run. They are the most dedicated. I would argue with Matt about having the best staff. Mine is spread out, but they really put the needs of students first. And so I just wanted to highlight them. And we even have a guy up there, one low, lonely gentleman preschool teacher. So in Hamilton, this year, we have 18 preschool classrooms. We serve students ages three to five. We are a Monday-through-Thursday program. We have Fridays off from students for professional development and special education compliance. And you can see here how we are distributed our classrooms across the district. This, last year, the state updated their operating standards for preschool, and one of the things that they did was change how those classrooms are designated. And so we have 15 and a half integrated classrooms. And an integrated classroom is 50% of the students have some type of disability, and 50% do not. And so we have 15 and a half of those. Then I also have three and a half classrooms of special education units. So up to eight students, all with pretty significant disabilities in there. And so we run two half-day sessions, so it's a total of 36 sessions of preschool. We're reaching a lot of kids. Just some additional numbers that I pulled as, as of February 8th. We were serving 518, I believe, when I checked today. We were at 540-something. Always, always growing. And you can see the distributions among the buildings there. And I did want to highlight that primarily, we do serve students with disabilities. 307 as of this date. But not all of them are in our buildings. Some of them are in other preschools. They're in other daycares. And we have itinerant staff that go out in the community to serve them. And one of the neat things that we started this year to expand on that itinerant program, because we are at capacity with who we can take in our program, is creating a playgroup, an opportunity for parents to bring students in and get a school-like experience, but maybe our classroom schedule doesn't work with their classroom or logistics. So we have been able to start that this year at Linden, and our itinerant team runs that. All right, so brag time. More cute pictures. Step Up to Quality is our five-star rating system in Ohio. And of course, we are five stars. I'm not going to, you know, mince any words about it. We are five stars, and we brag about that. Other places brag about being one star, but we brag about being five stars. You can get a banner. And so we have five stars, in case you didn't know. All six of our elementary schools are five stars. We work really hard on that. Even with Governor DeWine making changes to the system last year, it did reduce some redundancy, but it also created different requirements, ones that we weren't used to. And just because of our relationship with our licensing specialist, we were able to work through those. And again, all five, or all six buildings do have that five-star rating, in case I didn't say it. So I'm really proud of that, and it's not something that I can do on my own. Teachers and educational aides really had to jump on the ball this year to get that going. We work with custodians and maintenance department to get compliance certifications. And the nurses are a key part of that for trainings and for staff, or student files. All right, so it also has been four years since I've been up here. I think the last time I was up here, I was, Matt and I were both presenting. So some of the things that, minus COVID, that we really have been wanting to work on, it's taken longer to get here because of COVID, but I'm really excited about. First of all, is, you know, I'm tasked with, how do I know, how do we know that the kids in preschool are growing? How do we know that we're making an impact? And so some of the things that we've done to kind of figure out how we can measure that. We created last year a committee to come up, to create an assessment for preschool. And we call it our Preschool Common Assessment. And it is just academic-based. We have other assessments that look at the whole child. This one specifically is for academics. It's very quantifiable. We get really good data. And so this is our first year to have a full year of implementation of that. And then also, I worked with Corbin Moore to create a dashboard, so we can have a visual representation of that growth, which I will go over in just a bit. Then one thing I created this year is professional learning communities. So we have all kinds of systems in preschool. And it's just, being across seven different locations, it's really hard to manage that. So I tasked these communities or committees with a system. And each one is led by a different team, and they collaborate on how we can make our program better. And so some things on there are our assessment, our instructional themes, and to make sure we're all on the same page, MTSS, parent trainings that we will be offering in March, and professional development ideas. Let me know what you guys want. I need to know what to provide to you. And so getting that information from the people who need it has been really beneficial and just getting a different insight. Then I also worked with Julie and Carla over last year to create this curriculum essentials based on what they're doing in kindergarten, right? So what does your day look like? How much time are you spending on literacy? How much time are you doing in math? How can we make that, not watered down, but appropriate for a preschool classroom? And structure our days so that it helps that transition. We want to use the same vocabulary that you're using. We want to build, we want people to know that that kid came from Hamilton Preschool. And so this has been a huge benefit to us. We still use creative curriculum as our framework and our philosophy, but focusing on these instructional essentials from the directors has been really beneficial. And even teachers who kind of pushed back, like, I don't want a scripted thing. You know, it's nice. I said, this is what you're doing. We're just putting a name to it. And so we've had really good results. One of my goals this year was to improve data literacy in preschool. And so what I started doing was meeting once a month with each building to really dive into that data. Let's see, who's in what group? Who's meeting expectations? Who's exceeding? What are we going to do to move those kids on? So prior to this, we didn't have really good data in preschool. And now that we have that Preschool Common Assessment, we have quantifiable information that we can say, okay, this kid knows this, and this is the next step to move. And what does that look like in the preschool classroom? So that's been beneficial for teachers to break it down. Professional development and training. Part of having so many governing bodies is a lot of people telling us what we need to be trained in. So from CPR, first aid, to assessment, child abuse prevention and recognition, curriculum. And then Step Up to Quality has its own required trainings. We have a system called OKRA, and it stands for Ohio Child Care Registration, something along those lines. And we just call it OKRA. And it is a repository of professional development for early childhood professionals. And I encourage staff, go in there, find something that's appropriate for you, something that is appropriate for your students. So we do use our time on Fridays for that, that they can do self-guided professional development. And then there are some things, like, everybody wants more training on autism. Okay, let's bring somebody in. And so we have done a lot of those type of trainings in addition to the required ones. And here you can see on the left is some of our staff doing one of the Kagan Strategies, which was, I got really good feedback from that. And then we did some special ed training as well. All right, I'm super excited about this. I hope that you can see it. So this is from our new assessment. And the top is from the fall. So we did this the first couple weeks that they were with us. And we, we ended up assessing 411 students. That's ages three through five. Our expectations on the end exceeds expectations. That's when they leave preschool. So not everybody's going to be over there. Some kids have two or maybe even a third year of preschool to go. But this gave us a starting point. And then in December, we had increased to 458 students. But you can see the drop, even though we added more kids, the drop in not meeting expectations and the drop in approaching and that huge jump in meeting expectations. And we even had an increase in exceeding expectations. So it was so nice to put something visual to what I already knew, and I could show other people. All right, kindergarten readiness. This is just kids going to kindergarten next year. And what this shows me is that we are preparing our students. Our students are going to go to kindergarten ready to succeed. This is in December. We still have half a year left from this. And you can see that the majority of our kids are already meeting or exceeding expectations. We have a huge chunk that are approaching, but in December, that's what we would expect. And we do have a group that are not meeting. I anticipate that that's going to go down, and they'll move to approaching. With our population of students with disabilities and typically developing students, it is hard to gauge if those not meeting are because of a disability. And so that's something the teams are continuing to dive into. The last thing I wanted to talk to you about is the Success by Six Committee that I have been on for about a year now. And I wasn't really sure what to expect when I went and started with this. And these are just some of the agencies that are consistently there. We have monthly or bimonthly meetings. But our focus has been on trying to build that kindergarten readiness and to push kids and families to get registered for kindergarten prior to that Labor Day when they all do, right? And we know that last year, our enrollment in the spring for kindergarten was low, and then it drastically increased. And we were not alone in that. So one thing that Success by Six has done is how we can push out and communicate to the community and parents the importance of registering for kindergarten and getting them in. Even though they don't have to be there till they're six, the importance of getting them there at five, but also getting them into quality preschools and quality childcare prior to that to increase that exposure. So I'm excited about this and the things that we're doing. We have some great ideas and strategies to help improve that kindergarten registration. And I've created some great partnerships with these agencies. So I just want to say thank you again for letting me brag about our department. I will always, always brag about preschool and early childhood. I think it's the root of so many great possibilities.
Sarah, as you know, I'm a huge proponent of preschool in my prior life with United Way. And just the whole Step Up to Quality, congratulations on a five, because that is not easy.
We are five-star rated, in case you didn't know.
I know that's not easy. So just congratulations to you. I love early childhood education. It really sets the groundwork for these kids moving forward. And, you know, it's got, you've got challenges out there and, and all that. But thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Definitely want to say thank you for being a five-star.
Yeah, you are a five-star.
Absolutely same. Yeah, I totally agree. So, and then, you know, just instill it into our little people and just give them that great jumpstart as they continue on in their education and they grow in it. Just setting a great foundation, because that's huge. I just know that from just a personal standpoint with my own kids, that, that beginning foundation is critical in them, you know, as they grow older in their, in their school. And it makes all the difference. So thank you so much in bringing those five-star principles to the kids and just that expert, that excellence. So that's just what I think about, you know, just things that's been done in excellence and just care. So I appreciate your dedication and working with and being in this district. So definitely blessed and lucky to have you.
Thank you.
So your team, thank you.
And thanks to your, your whole staff.
Absolutely, yes.
I can tell you that I had no idea you were five-star until the night, and I'll never forget, and, you know, probably have a nightmare about it. But anyway.
I'll send you a banner.
Both of my grandchildren have been through the Hamilton preschools. And I can tell you from experience that both of them were absolutely ready for kindergarten. And you can, they excel now. One's in the first grade and one's in the sixth grade, but they excel. They, they were ready, and you've done an excellent job. If there were six stars, you would, you would deserve them as well.
Absolutely.
That's great. So you do an excellent job, you and your staff. Thank you.
Sarah, I've seen you over a few years, and I just want to say thank you for all you're doing for our kids. I'm proud of this, of what you're doing. And it's a real blessing to our community to have those kids with, with that type of staff. And I know that doesn't happen easily, so thank you very much.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Sarah, I appreciate all your leadership. It, I don't think people realize the just pure volume of compliance that is involved with preschool. And I want to thank the board on their commitment. One of the things that I want to make very public is the fact that preschool in the state of Ohio needs to be fully funded. And right now, we are supplementing well over a million dollars that is not a part of the funding formula to be able to provide these great opportunities for students. And we know how critical early childhood education is. And, you know, services equal dollars. And so that is one of the things that I think we need to work on from a educational community, is to be bigger advocates of that preschool and early childhood education for students. But thank you for everything that you do. It's making a tremendous difference.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. I don't believe we have any public participation tonight. Mr. Holbrook.
Thank you, President Baker. Tonight, I would like to start my comments by thanking the outstanding staff that we have in Hamilton City Schools. Last Friday, we were able to do something that very few, very few school districts can do. And we had a staff showcase where we had over 100 sessions of great variety for our teachers during a professional development day. Our instructional department, our teacher and administrative presenters, our guest presenters, our custodial staff, our food services at the high school, SROs helping us out. It takes a total team effort to put something on like that. And you can't do that if you're fragmented. And as a staff, you know, we were able to pull that off for the second year. I want to publicly thank Andrea Blevins. You know, we had these ideas for years, and we talked about them, but her coming in here and bringing that team together was actually able to make that a reality. And it's due to your leadership and your team's leadership that we were able to pull that off, so thank you. I also want to publicly congratulate, and Mr. Shermer took a little bit of this thunder, the seventh-grade boys' basketball team on winning the GMC. You know, that, that is not an easy feat to do, 20-0. And we do plan on bringing them to a future meeting in front of the board. I also want to congratulate our Hamilton High School football team program. Many of you may not be aware, but the Ohio High School Football Coaches Association annually honors the top eight teams in the state regarding GPA. Hamilton High School's football team was one of the top eight high school programs in the state of Ohio with regard to student GPA. So when we talk about student athletes, that's what, exactly what we're talking about. I couldn't be prouder of that. I want to shout out to Cara Berry, a first-grade teacher at Fairwood, as she is the author of a book called Which Cape Will I Wear Today? And I think that's extremely appropriate for educators. And she has been nominated as one of the 10 finalists for the Gold Star Chili Teacher of the Year Award. Also, I want to congratulate our academic quiz team. Matt Nickel, the coach of our academic quiz team, was named GMC Coach of the Year for that team this year as we competed against other schools in the GMC. Tonight, for your consideration on the agenda, we have several field trips. Our cutting-edge and Hamilton High School prestige programs are going to compete in Marysville for show choir competitions. Our Hamilton High School marching band is going to Indianapolis, and we already have this on the board now for next November, at Lucas Oil Stadium for the Band of America's Grand Nationals. And finally, some other pieces on the agenda tonight is that we have, for your consideration, a Coca-Cola contract for the district, replacement desks from Garfield, for Garfield and Wilson Middle School, some concrete repairs for the high school stadium and grandstands, a parking lot lease where we're going to be working, you know, on leasing some of those parking spaces over at the Miami School. And we have, for your consideration, some lighting and sound upgrades at the main campus auditorium. And finally, I want to compliment the treasurer's office as serving as a fiscal agent. They have final auxiliary service funds from ODE that filter through. And many don't understand the, the volume of work that that takes to be the fiscal agent of that. In our district, and so there's over a million dollars tonight that our treasurer's office is responsible for in being the fiscal agent, is those go out to Emmanuel, St. Anne's, St. Joe's, St. Pete's, and Baden. So, you know, those are on the agenda tonight, for your consideration as well.
Thank you, Mr. Holbrook. Next, we have OSHA membership resolution for 2023. Thank you, Mr. Davidson. Thank you, Mr. Isgro. Any further discussion? Mr. Frazier.
Mr. Isgro.
Yes.
Mrs. Matthews.
Yes.
Mr. Sprague.
Yes.
Mrs. Baker.
Yes.
Mr. Davidson.
Yes.
Next, you'll see our consent agenda. We've all had that available to us, so I entertain a motion.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Sprague. Thank you, Mrs. Matthews. Mr. Frazier.
Mrs. Matthews.
Yes.
Mr. Sprague.
Yes.
Mrs. Baker.
Yes.
Mr. Davidson. Mr. Isgro.
Yes.
Finally is our finance agenda. Mr. Frazier.
Thank you, President Baker. We have a relatively light finance agenda this evening. We've only got three items up for your approval. We have the normal financial reports, which include a cash flow statement and a cash position report through the month of January 2023. We have three confirming purchase orders up for your approval. And we also have a whole slew of donations. We've got 12 donations on the agenda tonight, which is very, very impressive. The 12 donations total $2,455.40, and they are spread through Wilson, Linden Elementary. We've got some for the high school athletic department, and then also the Athletic Hall of Fame. So those are my items for this evening.
Thank you. I need a motion to.
So moved the motion.
Thank you. Steve, Mr. Sprague. Any discussion? Mr. Frazier.
Mr. Sprague.
Yes.
Mrs. Baker.
Yes.
Mr. Davidson.
Yes.
Mr. Isgro.
Yes.
Mrs. Matthews.
Yes.
Okay, our next meeting will be Thursday, March 9th, at here at the board office, beginning at 4:00 PM. That is a executive session.
We'll have an open session from 4:00 to 4:30.
Right, okay.
And we'll have an executive session.
Okay, thank you. I need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Second?
Sir.
Thank you. This meeting is adjourned.